I'd like to call the order of the Pleasant Grove City Council on this Tuesday, June the 6th, 2023. And welcome every here that has joined us here, and those from the public especially. We have all of our council members here and most of our staff. And we welcome you to our first July, our first June meeting. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance by Daniel Cardenas, our Community Development Director, after which Councilmember Eric Jensen will give us the opening remarks. Daniel.
May I stand up and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
we went over in our work session, and so ask for a motion.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
I have a motion from Councilmember Anderson.
Second.
Second. Second, from Councilmember Jensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move on to our open session and invite anybody who would like to come forward and address the council this time.
Hello. My name is Virginia Lloyd. I live up on 150 North, way just, right just under the G up there. It's a really nice place. We live right across the street from Miss Jolly. I would like to bring to the board's attention the situation at the Veterans Memorial Pool. It's getting to the point where it's a bit ridiculous and untenable. We're, the pool is losing revenue by not being open. And there's very little transparency in this whole process, and we would like to see what's going on. As, as part of the public, we keep getting told, oh, the pool's just old. It's just having these problems. We all know how construction works. We all know that there's reasons for things. There's follow-up, and there's follow-through. And to just hear these nuanced, oh, it's just not open yet. No, it's not open today. No, it's just not open yet. We hope to have it. These are not good, honest things to come from a city board. A lot of questions come to mind when situations like this come up. Let me know when you want me to stop talking, by the way. I appreciate that.
You get three minutes. We didn't start our time.
Sorry, I kind of launched right into it.
You're fine.
Okay. We, as citizens, our tax dollars are being used to help kind of support the pool and kind of keep it moving. And as such, it would be really great for us to hear kind of some, some more feedback. About the transparency thing, it's really frustrating when only 70% or so people even have a Facebook account, and yet all the information's being posted on Facebook with very little city information being available. I don't know if you've ever gone or don't have access to a Facebook account and tried to go on as a guest. A lot of the city stuff is actually just not available. You don't get to see the posts. You don't, it's not open to the whole public. So if you're a citizen, oh, not only that, a lot of the pool information is only available on the rec center site. So if you're from another city and you're like, hey, it'd be great to go to the Pleasant Grove Pool, spend money there, because, because that's a nice thing to keep the pool going, they don't have access to that. And it's really, it's a really frustrating situation as a member of the public to kind of see these, these discrepancies between information being available to a certain group and not being available to the entire rest of the public that might want access to that. So I'd really like that at some point to be addressed, because that would just be really easy, right? Something like if the web developer for the city website could just say, hey, all information is available on our Facebook website, and then make sure Facebook actually allows guest information to be accessible from whatever that is. And including not just posting it on the rec center's web, Facebook page, I have to say that, right? The rec center Facebook page, but as well as the city Facebook page, because a lot of that stuff kind of gets lost in translation. Is the pool related to the, to the rec center? Some people know, some people don't. And that's a little bit frustrating. Moving on, I think it would be a really wise idea to kind of address whether or not the pool as it stands needs to be refurbished or completely overhauled in something new coming up. If you look at American Fork, American Fork has this little neat thing called a bubble. They just put over the pool, and they get to charge admission year-round to the swim teams, the competitive swimming, all that sort of thing. That's, that's a viable source of revenue for our city that I think would behoove us to actually look at and understand and figure out, well, if we can't keep the pool as it is, or the refurbishments and repairs are just costing an arm and a leg, maybe moving forward and figuring out whether or not a new pool, yes, I do understand that would be in the millions of dollars, but you look at a lot of the places, like venture capital sites, they're talking about $2 million. That seems like a lot, but if you look at the revenue versus cost analysis, it might be worth it. I know those are big numbers. I'm sorry. Look at your face. But those things, I think, are, are, this, this issue keeps happening up every year. Last year was only delayed by a couple days. Now we're moving into two and a half weeks. This is getting to an untenable point of where we as citizens, pass holders, people have already paid money to go to the pool. We can't even go to Linden anymore. Now we have to jump all the way to Orem, because I think we've ran out of our good character with, with Linden. They're like, no more. We're done. But anyways, I feel like the board should really start looking at those, those options and actually take that as, as, hey, we need to move forward on something. This situation is, is no longer a valid one to kind of keep rolling along. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I will offer to you, if you would like a, an update on the pool, our rector, Megyn, would like to talk to you out in the hall. And she can give you the latest and greatest on it. So, thanks, Megyn. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Leonard Bagalwa, and I'm, you can hear my accent. I'm originally from the Congo, Democratic Republic of Congo. And I moved here in Pleasant Grove for the last two years. Moved here in 2021. And so, I need to apologize, because what brought me here today may be different than what people are talking about. I work for, I work for the refugees community here in Utah County, and I worked with the state of Utah and Sola County for the refugee program. And since I moved here, I found out two things that is attracting refugees to move here in Pleasant Grove. So people here in Pleasant Grove are very generous, and they are trying to help refugees in their own homes and, and things like that. And with my experience, seeing the number, average number of people who are moving here, I kind of see that maybe raising the, not issue or something, but bringing this up will maybe kind of alert the city to know that something may need to be done to prepare for the, instead of waiting when it's too late, to prepare for these refugees who are moving in the area. So that's what brought me here. And yeah, so if this is out of the blue, I'm still learning the city, and, and I think I'm liking it so far, so good. And hopefully you will see me again, maybe with some different concerns.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I was gonna say, how do we connect with him?
I would love his contact information.
Yes, can we get?
Could you give your contact information?
Sure.
And well, aren't we lucky that we can complain about a pool, and this has happened? So we're pretty blessed where we live. That that's, if that's what we're complaining about, we got it pretty good.
Anyone else like to come forward, address the council? If not, we will now close our open session and bring it back up to the council and move to item number six tonight, our consent items, which include the city county, city council minutes for our May 16th, 2023 meeting, and our May 23rd, 2023 special meeting. And B, to consider approval of payment request number four for Newman Construction Incorporated for the 1300 West Street and Utility Improvement Project. And C, to consider for approval of payment request number two for BD Bush excavation for the 1300 East Street and Utility Improvement Project. And D, to consider for approval change order number two, payment request number three for Cody Elker construction for the 2022 PRV project. And E, consider for approval payment request number three for former excavation for the Battle Creek Park Street, Bell Park Sewer Project. And F, consider for approval of payment reports for May 18th, 19th, and June the 1st of 2023. So with that, if there's not many other questions, I'll ask for a motion for our consent items.
Mayor, I'm making a motion to approve tonight's consent items as read by you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen to have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bullock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move on to our board commission and committee appointments. We have one this evening, and Lisa Redding, why don't you come forward? Lisa is, would like to be on our planning commission as an alternate, and I've had a good chat with her. So Lisa, if you want to just tell us a little bit about you and what you've been doing with the city.
My name's Alicia Redding, and I've been working with the city for many, many years. It started as the neighborhood chair. I did that for 10 years and really, really enjoyed doing that. That disbanded, and I've kind of been floating around waiting for an opportunity. So I'm here tonight, hopefully as I can serve our community.
So I ask for a motion to appoint Lisa to the planning commission.
I'd like to make that motion that we appoint Alicia Redding to the planning commission as alternate.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, a second by Councilmember Lamone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Daniel would be glad to have you.
Yep.
Now move on to our public hearing items for this evening. Our first one, 9A, has been continued indefinitely until we get more information. So we'll move to 9B, public hearing to consider for adoption ordinance 2023-11 for zone change from Business Manufacturing Park, BMP, to the Grove Commercial Sales Subdistrict on Lot 5 of Penn and Ink subdivision Plant B, approximately 2.626 acres, located 1018 South 1300 West on Sand Lights Lane Neighborhood. And Will Clark is the applicant, and we'll turn it on to Director Cardenas.
Mayor, council, the item that we have in front of us is for a, for a rezoned. The property that the applicant is proposing to rezone is about 2.62 acres. And this is this property right here that I'm signaling with my, with my mouse, is kind of like a teardrop shape type of a property. As we can see, what happened and the creation of this different shape of a parcel came from the realignment of this road. When we realigned this road, as we can see, I have another image that can help us out a little bit, right here, we can see how with the realignment of this road, we create this parcel. Well, this parcel is actually part of a subdivision for the project that is going on right here in the BMP area. The BMP area, or the Business Manufacturing Park, is our light manufacturing zone, okay? If we take a look at what we have right there and how our zones work out, actually we have our manufacturing zone, or heavy manufacturing zone right here. Then we have a buffer of light manufacturing. That's how I like to call the BMP. It's the light manufacturing one. And then we have the Grove Commercial Sales Subdistrict right there. So we have that buffer. And what the applicant is proposing is to rezone again these 2.62 acres from the light manufacturing zone that it is, and then make it part of this commercial sales sub-district in the Grove. So it's going to go from being greenish to being kind of like salmon color, pinkish color right there. What happens with the, with the rezon, well, it changes the requirements for future development regarding, for example, the standards are different. Now we're looking to the standards that are part of the commercial sales from the Grove. Also, the uses are different.
Did your mic just shut off?
Thank you so much. I, I thought I was loud enough, but you're right.
We didn't want Kathy to complain.
Should, should, should I start from the beginning? So, so that's what the applicant is proposing again. For example, a use that is very popular in the BMP on the light manufacturing is what we call flex space. You know, we have a small little office in the front, and then people work and manufacture in the back. And pretty much the uses that are very common in the commercial sales of district are retail uses, are hotels, are office uses. So there's going to be a changes, a changing of uses. The applicant has an idea, and the applicant is trying to propose a development that is not permitted in the manufacturing, in the light manufacturing. For example, I can tell you convenience stores are, it's not permitted use in the BMP. We have that land used for, again, for light manufacturing, but it's permitted in the commercial cells. So it looks like the developer already has an idea of a project similar to a gas station with a convenience store in that corner. But again, the use is not permitted in the BMP, therefore he is pursuing a rezon. We talked about this item with the planning commission. The planning commission looked at this proposal, and the planning commission thinks that there's no negative impact for, by the rezon. In fact, it's actually any development that happens right here now will have to meet the requirements of, of the commercial sales sub-district. It's adjacent to the commercial sales of districts, so we're not doing any jumping, anything like that. And the recommendation for the rezon was unanimously, recommendation of approval for, for the rezon of 2.62 acres. Let me see what, if I'm missing something else. I think, I think I, I got everything for the reason. That's what I have, Mayor and Council. If you guys have any questions, I'll gladly answer some of them.
I have a question for you, Daniel. Right there, is that Linden's?
Yes, it is.
That is in Linden.
It is in Linden.
A little corner piece there.
I had some conversations with the, with the developer. If the city, the developer and the city of Linden agree on an agreement or something, and eventually annexation to our city, I'm leaving that to the developer, and I'm leaving that to the city of Linden to agree of, on bringing that land to, to our development, to our city, sorry. Right now, we consider that 2.62 acres is enough for a developer to, to build a good project. And again, if eventually that property is considered by the applicant and the city of Linden to be annexed into our city, there will be a process. We'll bring it in, we'll rezon it, and it'll be part. But as, as it is right now, it will still belong to Linden, or still Linden City.
Any other questions for Daniel? Okay, thank you, Daniel.
My pleasure, Mayor.
We'd like to open our public hearing and invite anybody to come forward and address the council on this change of zone.
Hi, my name's Will Clark. I'm here representing Dakota Pacific on this rezon application. And as Daniel mentioned, we're looking to take this parcel from Business Manufacturing Park to Commercial Sales within the Grove. And I just want to walk through a couple of reasons why we think that's an appropriate thing to do. So the first is, you'll notice on this parcel that it's very oddly shaped. And the way it sits, it's not very attractive to light manufacturing or industrial occupiers. These users are typically, typically looking for a larger, more efficient site that offers ample truck parking and truck circulation on-site. And this site does not offer that. The second reason, as Daniel mentioned, we think with the relocation of 1300 West from our west border to our east border, it creates an opportunity to create a cohesive sales district. And we think that the road is probably the logical breaking point between these two different zoning districts. And the third and last reason is we think that 2000 West is going to become a pretty important artery to the city once UDOT connects it to I-15. And we think that rezoning this parcel to uses that can take advantage of that increased traffic and generate sales tax for the city is probably the right thing to do. Those are sort of the top three reasons, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come and address the council? If not, we will bring it back up to the council for any further discussion or, or motion on ordinance number 2023-11.
I'd make a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-11 for zone change from Business Manufacturing Park, BMP, to the Grove Commercial Sales Subdistrict on Lot 5 of the Penn and Ink subdivision Plant B, approximately 2.626 acres, located approximately 1018 South 1300 West.
We have a motion by Councilmember Bullock to have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jensen. And this will be a roll call vote, and we'll start out with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Todd Williams.
Yes. Thank you for calling my full name, Mayor.
Yeah, I just, just reading what it said there, okay? So anyway, I'm sorry. Just wanted to make, give you extra credit.
All good. Thank you.
So with that, the motion passes, and...
I do have one question, though, now.
Yes.
How do, what, how do we start the process of that annexation of that one piece on 13th?
So it won't be an annexation process. It will be a mutual boundary line agreement between municipalities. It's provided for in the state statute. Basically, we just have to have Linden say that they're agreeable to making that change. We'll have a legal description prepared and an ordinance or a resolution adopted by both cities and then filed with the state to officially change the municipal boundaries.
And so, do you need something from us to start that in motion?
Not yet.
Okay.
Daniel, sorry, Dan, how big a piece is that?
Um, yeah, it's the, it's the one right west of my building.
Yeah, I mean, how big is it? Like a, like a...
No, no, I'm saying, yeah, the south of that. No, 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 no. I'm saying that one.
That's Linden's.
Right?
No, that's, that's, that's ours.
No, this is Linden. No, this is Linden as well.
This is Linden, and this is Linden. Which one are you talking about?
I would, I would like both of those, then. Let's just follow 13th West.
I can give that.
But that's, that's not big enough to...
Linden's not going to go along with that.
Well, could we try?
No, that'll be...
Can I ask the question?
If I were me, I would say no.
It's, it'd be a no. It's a prime property tax.
But that's a, that's a very nice continuation border all the way along.
Call, call your friend. Call Carolyn.
You work on that, Diana, okay?
That's really where it needs to start.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I would say that the developer on this side would love to just continue the rest of his property right up to the, just follow the line of the road.
The developer will, will handle the piece on the east side of it.
That's what I'm talking about, Daniel.
But the other piece, if that's what, if you want to open that discussion, it probably does need to be situated.
Yeah, the property owner would have to go and ask Linden.
Yeah.
Okay, that finishes our public hearings for this evening. We'll now move on to our action items.
What about, hold on, Mayor. What about the other one, the 216?
Yeah, yeah, that one.
That's the one we were talking about at first.
I know.
Quarter acre.
So it's less...
It's a quarter, quarter acre.
Wait, so how much was the...
1.25.
1.25.
And the other one was...
1.24 is not developable without the rest.
I know.
And so, it's going to make sense to work something out. But they, they can, they can build a facility over two broad categories.
Well, they did.
That's happened in other places.
Yeah, that's happened in Pleasant Grove.
I understand that, but I understand that they're not obligated.
So we'll just, they can, they can have their, they can have their parking there, and we'll take all the sales tax over on the other side there. Okay, so anyway, we'll work that out. Okay, let's move on to our action items ready for vote this evening. Our first item is 10A, consider for approval of four flag lot final subdivision plant called Crestwood Subdivision Plant C on 1.13 acres of land located approximately 600 East, 500 North, R18, single-family residential zone in the Monkey Town neighborhood. And Jeff Strong is the applicant, and Director Cardenas. And so, this is all about.
Mayor, council, every time you say Monkey Town, it brings a smile to my face. But I guess because all the children used to play in that area, right? That's why it's called Monkey Town. I think it's a cute name.
My roots come from Monkey Town, so be careful how you...
Wait, you're... No, I love it. I love it.
They do?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
My dad's a Monkey Towner.
I didn't know that.
Where were you, you lived?
I, I thought you were like Little Denmark.
Oh, geez.
Not those guys.
Oh, not those guys.
Mayor, I, I live in Little Denmark, so yeah, we'll, so just be careful.
They would have kept moving to California if that would have happened.
Okay, so, Council, Mayor, what I have here in front of you guys is a, a proposal for a subdivision for this piece of land. As we can see, there's some empty land right here in the back of this property on 575. And what the applicant is proposing is a flag lot subdivision. The...
Can you just pull back just a little bit?
Pull back, yes.
I'm just trying to get a...
No, it's not, oh, yeah, it is your state.
East of, east of the G-her High?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, okay. That's why I brought these maps, and the staff report actually is zooming a lot. So it's good to have this map to take a look at what we're doing. And I'm going to zoom in a little bit just so we can take a look at the land. So as you guys can see even right now, this, this property has never been subdivided, but it has the nature of a flag lot. If we take just this area right here, actually, it already looks like a flag. What the applicant is proposing is a three lot subdivision, three lot subdivision. This is going to be the base lot, and this area right here will be cut into two lots to create a flag lot. This is where the utilities, this will be the, the east man for utilities and, and access to the lots in the back. These lots right here, as you can see, they're also large, deep and large. They can eventually develop, because we have a, a public street 600 North that eventually will have a cul-de-sac allowing access. So the creation of this subdivision does not create or, or block any future development of surrounding land, which is also great. It's, it's exactly what we're looking for, to make sure that everyone has an equal opportunity to develop the land. If we take a look at this, probably it's a little, this, we can see how these lots in the future, actually, the developer can do, sorry, the property owners right here can do three lots if we do it like this. And it allows from 500 North to access, this is the common stem, and we have two lots. This is in the R1A zone. Another thing that I'm, as a staff, we're in favor of this subdivision, is that each lot is bigger than, is about 10,000 square feet. So we're not, we're not going too short on the land. We're not going too small on the land, allowing for a bigger building envelope, and of course, a bigger structure to be located in the area. This item went to the planning commission. It meets all the requirements of our current ordinance, and it received a unanimous recommendation of approval as well. Like I said, it's only two new lots, and each lot will be, each lot will be about 10,000 square feet lots, okay, in an R1A zone.
Okay.
Any other questions for Daniel?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a four-flag lot final subdivision.
Sorry, it's a three lot. It's a three lot, not four, it's a three lot.
That's four on the weekend, isn't it?
Yeah, it's two.
All right, a three-flag lot final subdivision plot called Crestwood Subdivision Plant C, as, as noted.
Well, it's plat, I think it's Plat A, isn't it, on my, on my staff report here?
All right.
Let's make sure we got...
So I'll say it again.
Is it C or, yeah, I think it's A.
You want to check that really quick?
It says C.
Okay.
Your staff report says A.
It's A, and it's right there. It's, it's A.
All right, so I'm going to say it again. I would like to make a motion that we approve a three-flag lot final subdivision plot called Chriswood Subdivision Plant A on 1.13 acres of land located approximately 600 East, 500 North, R18, single-family residential zone, Monkey Town neighborhood, as presented.
We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson to have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jensen.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Brent got it.
Oh, Councilmember...
I stay quiet.
Bullock on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to 10C, consider awarding the 900 West Surface Restoration Project...
B.
Nope, B.
Oh, excuse me, I skipped B. Go to B. Consider for adoption Resolution 2023-027, authorizing the mayor to declare a 2021 Toyota Tundra pickup truck as surplus and directs that it be disposed of according to city policy for disposing of surplus property and providing for an effective date. Director.
Yes, as a reminder, anything of significant value will need to be surplus. The Toyota has a significant value. This is part of a vehicle maintenance and rotation program that saves the city money. As you're aware, we don't have any full-time mechanics on our fleet and so as part of, to manage our fleet and, and as part of our employee group. So this program works very well to purchase new vehicles. We get the new warranty, we get the new oil changes and different things that come with a new vehicle and then drive them and take care of them. And if we take care of them well, which we have, we're able to surplus those and recoup significant value that ends up keeping our fleet in good condition and less downtime. It's, it's a good program and has been very successful for us so far.
Any other questions for the director?
No.
If not, I ask for a motion on Resolution Number 2023-027.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt, hold on, I just got to find it. There it is. 2023-27, authorizing the mayor to declare a 2021 Toyota Tundra pickup truck as surplus and direct it to be disposed of according to, to city's policy.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Diana, Councilmember Diana Anderson. And it will be a roll call vote and we'll start out with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Now move on to C, to consider for awarding 900 West Surface Restoration Project bid to Kilgore Construction with a base bid price of $325,609.15 and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award, notice to proceed and agree, and the agreement. And we'll turn the time back over to our Public Works Director.
Yeah, thank you. We advertised for bid, received five bids and we, we feel like this is a really good price. There was good grouping in the bids. This will run from 2,600 north to 4,000 north on the travel lanes of 900 West. We'll ask that the two contractors work together on schedule and should create a nice driving surface by the end of the summer after we have 2,600 north and 900 west.
Neil, 900 West, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I've got 600, I've got 1,300.
Stone Gate.
You turn, Rose.
Got it, I'm with you now. Yep, up, up to the north boundary.
North to our border.
Perfect, thank you.
And then a, as you heard, we're working on an agreement with Cedar Hills to upgrade 4,000 north as well.
This has long been...
Well, it was the 15 cents that put it over the road.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it, it's always a challenge where there's undeveloped land.
Yeah.
The appropriate level of treatment, there's, there's, put a little bit on it versus dig a lot down and finding the right balance with the right timing and, and we feel like we came up with a good solution. And you know, we're not doing sidewalk, we're not doing edge treatments. We're going to do the travel lanes and, and so those will be improved. Eventually, there will be road cuts and so, you know, balancing all those needs and, and anticipating the future is, is part of the equation.
Well, I think the future is, is that that's going to be a very heavily traveled road.
It is, is now and...
I think we can confidently say that.
Yeah.
The best asphalt is the two shoulders on the, most of the road up there through there. So that's, this is a good, a good call on this to just do it.
So are we splitting the price with Cedar Hills or?
On 900 West, that's, that's our, our road.
Not 900 West, I'm saying on 4,000.
On 4,000 north, that's a mag project and we're splitting our local government match on that, yes.
Okay.
When it gets funded. I don't think it's been funded yet.
Yeah, it has.
It has? Well, there was a big discussion about that on our last meeting last week. So anyway, not on that, but on funding availability.
It's been approved, maybe they need to make sure they get our money to us.
Problem, everything's approved and, but we'll, we'll talk.
We're probably, you know, at least a year out. We're just starting the design process and, and working on right away. It's, if you guys can tell everybody to be nice to us when we knock on their door, that'd be great.
Some people just...
Good luck with that.
Some people just don't like you, Neil. I just, I'm sorry, that's just the way it is, so. Okay, with that, no other questions, we ask for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion for awarding the 900 West Surface Restoration Project bid to Kilgore Construction with a base price of $325,609.15 and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award, notice to proceed and agreement.
We have a motion by Eric Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilmember Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now move on to our last item ready for vote this evening. And it's, it's 10D to consider authorizing the mayor to sign a special use permit, local consent request for Clearwater Distilling Company to add an educational scientific permit to their current distiller permit to hold classes to educate about spirits. And General Counsel Peterson.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have a request from a local business, Clearwater Distilling Company, which is located at 564 West, 700 South. And if you'll recall, they have been in prior to this to seek local consent originally to establish their business as part of their annual audit with the Utah State Department of Alcohol. They inquired about the opportunity to start doing some educational classes there and the state told them that they could add that to their permit, but they would also require another local consent to expand the use. They're proposing to hold classes to educate about spirits, processes and history. And they get a lot of requests for, from their customers to take a tour and they feel like it would be beneficial to add that to their, their services. And they would be thinking about doing it on a Friday or Saturday evening and to have classes that would talk about using spirits responsibly and learn about the nuances of creating various distilled drinks. And the classes would maintain all the regulations that they currently follow with their business license or their alcohol license, including proper ID, no more than two and a half ounces of spirit consumption by any one person. And the classes would generally be about 60 to 120 minutes depending on the depth of the curriculums offered. And the applicant is here if you have any additional questions.
Yes, would you come forward, Roger?
Yes, my name's John O'Clare. I do represent Clearwater Distilling. And all the information I shared with Ms. Peterson that she just spoke about is really kind of the basis where we're at. For us, it's primarily an additional revenue generator. When we do tours in our facility, we get, we try to do broad brush stroke. But of course, people get interested and curious and they want to do a deeper dive. High West Distillery, for example, does a deep dive educational class and that's kind of where the idea was spawned when the auditors were in the other day and they said, well, why aren't you doing this if you're getting all these questions? Because it, it prolongs the tour and everything else. So we're figuring if we could do classes, it would, it would give us an opportunity to go into greater detail. We're kind of nerds on what we do and it's really kind of an interesting process and we'd like to be able to answer that in more detail with the people that join the classes.
I have had the opportunity to come down to your place a couple of times and I was really interested in it. My wife graduated with culinary and she went down and we got a deep dive with one of your people.
It would have been probably our distiller Nick who likes to go way off on a tangent, so.
It was very, very interesting and I'd encourage anybody to go down there. It is really, really interesting.
How do, do people just go to the website and sign up or how do they get involved with the class?
Yeah, so we, we've got a program that we currently use that registers for tours and tastings and that program can be the same thing. We can set up a specific item on that menu, so to speak, that would have a class and whatever it happens to be, it might be pairings, it might be, you know, the nuances between a gin or a whiskey or a tequila. My sister-in-law, who works for us, Stephanie, as you know, was in education for 20 years. She also has a master's in curriculum development and instruction. So she's kind of taken that bull by the horns and creating the curriculums that are meeting a lot of the questions that we get on the tours.
That's awesome.
It's great.
Yeah, just the other day I had someone ask me, you know, how do I get more information on the distillery we have in town? I'd like to look into that. So this, I'll, I'll send them, tell them, hey, they're going to be having some classes.
Absolutely, absolutely. So as long as we get through the process with you dabs, I mean, the first step was the local consent that we're asking you for.
And the, the nice thing also was is you provided distilled water during the time when...
Yeah, I was actually surprised on that when, when that happened last year. I had a gentleman come in who, he represents a company that makes our labels and said, do you guys, you know, have a byproduct, distilled water byproduct? He said, not really. I said, distillation's a process, but we can make distilled water. And I said, why are you asking? He goes, it's unavailable. He goes, you can't find it in the grocery stores. People need it for CPAPs, BIAPs. And I said, well, we were kind of in a slow period at the time. We had done a lot of production and had it ready. And I said, well, why aren't we doing distilled water? Have some people come in. Now our business is ramped up a little bit more and unfortunately we can't. But I do have a company that I'm meeting with tomorrow that wants to see if we can do distilled water for them. They would like to buy it for their, their company or their employees in bulk form, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I'd like to have...
And I'd like to see you all down there.
Yeah. I'd like a motion on this special use permit.
I'd make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the special use permit, local consent request for Clearwater Distill Company to add an educational scientific permit to their current distiller permit to hold classes to educate about spirits.
I have a motion by Councilmember Bullock, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Diana Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to let you know too that in the mayor's office, I have a fifth of your best whiskey on my shelf in there. And it's for emergency purp, it's for emergency, it's for emergency purposes only. There's a couple of shot glasses in the drawer too. So anyway, but we just, when it, when it really gets bad, I guess.
So let's define bad.
Well, and I do have a fifth at home too. Okay, so anyway, just one, I'm sorry. I do, I do frequent our local businesses, okay?
That is so admirable.
It's food storage.
It is.
Okay, so. Okay, we've already reviewed our June 20th unless you've come up with anything else in the next, last 30 minutes, Scott, for our next meeting. I think we've got everything covered there and so we'll move right along here and ask if the council has any business this evening, Eric.
Well, yeah, Saturday is of course the car show and then the fireman's breakfast, but then the, the big concert on Main Street. Should be epic.
It will be.
We had a few council members get a little out of hand dancing, but that's a good thing.
I think it was 16,000 steps that we got last year, Sid.
Yeah.
Yep.
Todd, Diana.
I'm just so excited for Strawberry Days. This is, my daughter from Florida flew in. This is, the daughter from Idaho is coming down. This is family coming home. This is the week.
And, and Sid, Miss Strawberry today, so.
The costume changes begin. The wardrobe changes, yes.
I got my Strawberry Day shirt on.
I know, I love that.
I don't have anything.
Thank you for making sure that I was...
Hey, thank you, Brett. With that, that, it's going to be a great week coming up, so.
Wait, did we find strawberries? Do we have sufficient strawberries for our needs?
Well, I, they, they lined them up a long time ago.
California was underwater. They were having a hard time finding strawberries. So there may be a strawberry shortage. We may just have to go berry.
Okay, Berry Days, okay. Bring in the raspberries, okay. Thank you, Council. I appreciate that. Look forward to this next week and everything we've got going on. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson and a second by Councilmember Jensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or adjourn, thank you.
Wait, Megan, I had...